Session for February 1st, 2018. My name is Scott Wagner, Mayor pro tem. As the mayor is ill today and will not be joining us, so I'll be running the meeting. We have a light attendance at the moment, so we will defer all those items that may need to be voted on until later when we may have a quorum. But one of the items that we can go ahead with is the 2017 Business Survey Presentation. I assume someone is ready to make that presentation. So gentlemen, come on up. As you do, I'll just note for those who may be watching in the audience that this is a survey that we do every year to take the temperature of our business community and understand how satisfied or perhaps unsatisfied with certain aspects of our operation they may be. And with that, I see the slide deck is ready to roll. So gentlemen, I will let you introduce yourselves and decide amongst you who will begin the presentation.
Sure. Well, I think I'll be beginning the presentation. My name is Bo McCollum in the City Manager's Office of Performance Management. Kate was supposed to be presenting today, but she's also ill as well.
Wow. Glad they're not here.
Yes.
All right.
I'm sure she's watching on channel two.
There you go.
And I'm Gary Sage. I'm in the Research and Policy Office for the Economic Development Corporation of Kansas City.
Well, Gary, and thank you both very much.
So thanks for the opportunity to present the results for the 2017 Business Satisfaction Survey. This is a survey that my office has been working in collaboration with the EDC and also the mayor's office. We've been administering the survey since 2011 in the city. So just to briefly discuss the methodology of the survey, the administration's through a combination of mail and online. Our ETC is the administering organization. They administered it in November, December of 2017. Sample size, there was approximately, there's 513 businesses. We had a stratified random sampling, just like we do with the Resident Satisfaction Survey. We had a minimum of 100 in each of the four geographic zones for the survey. And then our margin of error is plus or minus 5%. So we're going to be wanting to pay attention to any changes in trends between 2016 and 2017 that are over 5% to be statistically significant. And just to give you an idea, the characteristics, some of the businesses that were responding, 58% have been in KC for more than 21 years. 43% have less than 10 employees at the location that was surveyed. And then the survey is asked what industry the folks are in that are responding to it. There are seven industries there. Those industries are all part of, they're identifying the Advanced KC Economic Development Plan, so that's why we survey on those industries. Other, you'll see it's the other services, construction, accommodation of food services, real estate. And then just to show you some of the sample of the respondents that responded to the survey, the geographic area is broken up into four different districts, the north, west, east, and south. We had slightly more respondents from the north and west, but again, we had over 100 from each district. 48% of respondents said their personal residence was within KC Mo. And I guess just as far as the takeaway from the survey, before we get into the analysis of it, the first takeaway is that the results are very similar to 2016. There wasn't a whole lot of change. It was pretty steady across the board. And then the other takeaway would be that our resident survey has a lot of alignment with the results in this survey, too. And we'll be showing some of those results from the FY17 Resident Satisfaction Survey. But to start off, Kansas City is a place to do business. This is like our high-level measure for the survey, kind of like on the Resident Satisfaction Survey as a place to live or a place to work. We're stayed steady, 70%. There was no statistic change there, and we're keeping that all-time high. As far as businesses that rate KC as below average or poor, there's only 6%, and that's also been pretty steady as well over the years. And then one statistical change that I wanted to point out, in the East Zone, there was a decrease of 7% as far as satisfaction rating Kansas City is a place to do business between 2016 and 2017. Last year, in 2016, across the board, northwest, south, and east of zones, it was, there was no statistical difference. But this year, we did see that decrease in the east. And then looking at the Kansas City is a place to do business by sector, so breaking it down into the different industries, different sectors, fell into three groups. There was a higher-than-average satisfaction, average satisfaction, then lower-than-average satisfaction. And the differences in average, you can see stands out as far as how it rated Kansas City is a place to do business, excellent or good. In the public administration, education, nonprofit, design, engineering, health, science, and services, those were higher-than-average. And then lower-than-average, the supply chain management, financial technical, you can definitely see those differences between the lower and the higher. And we will be doing more analysis on the context of why the supply chain management, financial technical rated it lower-than-average. And then perceptions of the city and city government. So again, these are kind of the high-level measures for the business survey. So the only change was in the quality of new development in the city, and that actually went up. Otherwise, they've pretty much maintained overall image of the city and overall quality of life in the city remains high. Resident satisfaction, again, there's that alignment between 66% and 67%. Overall feeling of safety in the city, while there wasn't a statistically significant change in that, it has maintained a trend downward. And then overall value received for city tax dollars and quality of education remain And then looking at the rankings, so the survey asks business owners to rank their most important factors as far as keeping their business in the city. And so the rankings, we have 2017 and 2016. On the left here, you'll see these arrows. That indicates whether increased or decreased from the 2016 ranking. So availability of telecommunication, attitude of local government, and the low crime rate, all state top three. Availability of telecommunication did move to that first spot. Those have been pretty consistent over time, top three. The most movement would be the quality of local schools. You see that moved up to the fifth ranking. And then also level taxation moved down three places. As far as satisfaction with city services, this is looking at the user satisfaction. So this is broken, this chart is broken into two different columns essentially. There's the services that were utilized by more than 50% of the businesses. So that's saying that the businesses used, 50% or more businesses use those services. And then the services that were utilized by less than 50% of the businesses. And again, over time, these pretty much stayed the same as far as the usage rate. As far as services utilized by more than 50% of businesses, fire inspection stays high. There wasn't a change in those top four. Police-crime safety, again, that one has moved down. Tax collection, storm drainage, not really surprised based on the past year of weather that we had in the city. And then street maintenance has consistently been around that 31%. And then services utilized by less than 50% of the businesses. There was a slight decrease with ambulance and fire incident, but again, those remain high as far as satisfaction. When we get to the lower end of the scale, code enforcement, municipal court did see an increase in satisfaction from 2016, and sidewalk maintenance saw a little bit of a So this is another way to slice and dice the city services and identify the different focus areas, which area is most important for businesses that are city services. So above-average importance and above-average satisfaction, we see airport services, ambulance, business licensing, fire incidents, police-crime safety. And then above-average importance but below-average satisfaction is the street maintenance, tax collection, water services. Again, these are pretty consistent with 2016. And another way to look at this chart, it's kind of like the IS, Important Satisfaction Ratings, that we do with the Resident Satisfaction Survey. And then looking at those zones and sectors that had a lower rating of Kansas City as a place to do business. So breaking this down, you know, is this a city service that they're ranking? Is that part of their judgment on why Kansas City is not as good of a place to do business as the other sectors, as it workforce? This is looking specifically at city services. And so in the East Zone, we did see that the overall quality of city services, overall image of the city, value for city taxes, 3-on-1, code enforcement, and police-crime safety response were all areas that had lower satisfactions than the other zones. And then the supply chain management, there weren't a lot of city service areas that had lower satisfaction than the other sectors. Quality of new development in the city was one. And then financial and technical, a few city services in there, mostly business licensing, tax collection, overall image of the city. And then as far as rating the workforce, so we'd ask a question on there, ask the business owners to rate the workforce in the city. Satisfaction for all questions was pretty unchanged from 2016. You will see that those first five questions, they are maintaining a trend downwards, even though there wasn't a statistically significant change. Kansas City is a place to work actually did have a small increase, so that's staying up. But quality and availability of workers were rated as the two most important factors for businesses of these questions. And one thing that I know has been brought up with the EDC is with the economy improving, that there has been tightening with the workforce. That might be part of the decrease. And then again, looking at the satisfaction with the quality of workforce by sector, so this is looking at quality workforce broken down by sectors, whether they had a higher-than-average rating, an average rating, or a lower-than-average rating. Again, you see public administration, education, design, engineering had a higher-than-average rating as far as the satisfaction with quality workforce. And then on the lower end, supply chain management, specialized manufacturing, whereas financial technical, health sciences, and art all fell in the average there. And then looking at the differences in workforce satisfaction, so previous slides, we looked at city services. This is looking at the difference in workforce satisfaction, was workforce a component of the lower rating of Kansas City is a place to do business? We see in the East Zone, with the availability of workers, education, technical skills of workers, and productivity of workers, there was lower satisfaction. Most important issue for businesses in those zones were availability of workers. And then supply chain management, you can see that the workforce satisfaction was definitely an aspect of their lower rating as a place to do business. Across all the different categories, availability, quality of workers, stability of workers, they had lower satisfaction. Whereas you see with the financial and technical sector, workforce wasn't so much a factor. And then on the survey, we also asked the businesses' plans over the next three years, whether they're going to increase employment, expand. About a quarter plan to increase their employment in the city, renovate in their current location. Almost half did not, didn't have any plan to change. There was, you know, none of the above. And so you see, you know, about 24% expanding in the current location as well. And then as far as relocating within KC Mo, relocating outside KC Mo, relocating within, we saw 8%. Relocating outside was only about 6%, 4% closing. And again, these numbers are similar to 2016. There wasn't a lot of statistical significance. And then we also asked the sources of finances in the last five years. Working capital was the highest, 30%. Bank loans, 28%. And then going down the list there, you can see if you have any questions about where they're financing from. 51% of businesses own their facility that responded to this survey. And then 46% of businesses are members of a local business or trade association. And we also asked if businesses currently export outside of the United States. 85% of the cities that responded said, no, they don't. 14% do, and only 1% said they don't, but they currently would like to. We also asked a question about the perception of the EDC. And so that's been pretty consistent around that 45% range. The use of EDC has been trending upwards, though. And then satisfaction with EDC, while there was a little bit of a decrease in satisfaction in 2017, most of that came from the neutral. So the neutral grew in that time. And then the highest awareness of EDC services was property tax abatement, followed by job investment incentives, redevelopment incentives, TIF, and then financing. And then we also asked a question about perception of other business assistance programs. So Metropolitan Community College, Full Employment Council, KC Biz Care, KC Source Link, and the Justine Peterson Small Business. You can see that the percentage of businesses that are aware of those services, and then also the ones that have used them. Metropolitan Community College had the highest usage, and Justine Peterson was around 2%. And then you can also see the satisfaction there as well. The thing of note with this, the satisfaction, is the dissatisfaction remains low across the board there. Nothing's over 20%. And again, this is consistent with 2016. I told you to be hearing that quite a bit in this presentation. So with that, that ends the presentation. Ends the presentation. If there's any questions, we'll open it up to questions. And then the full report is also on kcmo.gov on the survey.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. I might start off with a couple of questions, and we'll open it up to everybody else. First of all, I noted your export services slide, and that 1%. I assume those seven have been put in touch with Norbely Galindo to start that exporting work.
Yes.
Good, good. Yes or no? You're very good, very good, Gary. Thank you. Then next question is that slide on the other, the perception of other business assistance programs. And although, Bo, you mentioned that no one's at 20%, we do have one that's kind of close with Full Employment Council. And I was curious if we have any insights as to why that number may be so high? Or if there's a way that we can find out a little bit more as to why that may be borderline, so to speak?
I think what we've seen in the past, councilman, is that the Full Employment Council has a tough duty with regard to taking folks that oftentimes have got lower levels of skill and trying to find employment. And it's been pretty consistent with regard to those kind of evaluations, that it'd be a little bit more critical, I think, with regard to the quality of the job applicant and that kind of thing. Versus Metropolitan Community College, a lot of what they're doing with businesses is oftentimes delivering free training, or if they're not delivering free training, they're delivering some high-quality training. So there's a big gap in there with regard to the educational capabilities, I think, the two organizations, and who their customers are and who their target audience are.
Fair enough, fair enough. And then last question was, and it may have a, may not have a direct correlation to the survey, but I'll go ahead and take the opportunity. Certainly, I think we all were surprised with the recent announcement of Harley-Davidson, which may not, maybe less about us, it's them. But I am curious if there is something related to their announcement, or something that we can take away from that announcement that could either be informative to our survey in the future, or if there's something in our survey that you might suggest is informative to an issue that they experienced that may be an indicator that a major employer may be looking to jump or looking to consolidate their operations, and therefore, we should pay special attention to that. And I don't know, but I have to ask the question.
It's a good question.
You won't get a yes or no this time?
No, I'm not going to be able to do it that simply. Harley-Davidson was actually the first project I worked when I came to the Economic Development Corporation in 1996. So it's very frustrating on both a professional and personal level to watch this one close down in Kansas City. When I was at the Metropolitan Community College, we did a lot of work with them. We actually, the Business and Technology Campus was the entity that pretty much screened all their employees, which was an unusual one from standpoint. I think it was the only employer that has ever done that with the college. We actually had a Harley-Davidson laboratory down there that was pretty much dedicated to assessing candidates to see whether they were qualified. It was an unexpected one. I don't know that there was anything that stuck out that would really tell us that this thing, that they were about to close down, other than the fact that they've been having trouble with sales, particularly in North America for a long period of time. But for the 20 years they've been in Kansas City, they've also weathered that in other occasions, too. So, and I know some of the economic development organizations, as of like in the last two weeks, had visited their plant. You know, oftentimes when a business is having trouble, they go quiet on you, would be the way to put it. And they're often, they're often very, very close to the vest is what they're going to do. We do have means of identifying where we may have potential businesses that are either going to close or leave. And when we see those indicators coming in, for example, the one that's most common in Kansas City is that somebody's got a lease that's coming due. And we track that with our CoStar system. So if we see somebody that's got a lease that's coming up in like the next year, we usually are going out to visit with them because we want them focused on trying to renew that list on Kansas City rather than any of the other more suburban communities. But I think Harley was, I don't know of anybody that anticipated it, I really don't. And I don't think that they intended to let anybody know that they were about to do what they did. Usually, when you've got a plant shut down of that size, I think the federal government requirement on the WARN system, W-A-R-N system, workforce, I think they've got to give like a month's notice, and I'm not sure why.
60 days, and they haven't filed.
60 days, and they haven't filed. So, you know, this one was very unexpected.
I appreciate that answer. Bo, were you going to add something?
So from the survey design perspective, we do ask a question. When we ask this question here, what are you planning to do in the next three years? There is a follow-up. If you're relocating within KC Mo, relocating outside of KC Mo, closing, we do ask why on the survey. I don't have those results with me, and I can be happy to send those to you.
Sure, sure.
You know, a lot of times, like with the closing, we see retirement, you know, the business owners are retiring. But yeah, I'd be happy to forward that on.
No, thank you very much. I'll open it up to other questions. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. We had this in the EDC Board Meeting Friday, essentially, good information. I think it's important to note the business satisfaction for small businesses. And we had a Small Business Committee today, meeting today. And I thought it was, one interesting statistic that we were provided was for why it's so important to really support these small businesses is for last year, for new business startups employing people for the first time, there were 16,000 jobs created from very small businesses in Kansas City. And so that's, I was telling somebody, that's the equivalent of the entire Cerner Project in South Kansas City over 10 years, 16,000 new jobs. One year for small businesses, and that's just startup small businesses, not those that started two, or three, or four years ago, because the number is about 16, 15, 16, 17,000 each year. So it's really important we keep doing those things that we need to do to support our small businesses. Really want to thank, we've got John Pager in the audience, and Biz Care, I just actually popped into Biz Care on my way over to thank everybody again, and for the good work you're doing with our small business startups and keep doing that. It's showing in the survey responses, so we appreciate it.
All right. I think, Councilman Taylor? Anyone else? No? I think you have bowled us over, and actually, you have, and I continue to thank you for the work that you do. It's important work, and it helps us know in what direction we wish to go. So any final words or final thoughts, gentlemen?
Just one. We had two of you in, and you'll hear this again. Looking at the survey, and I've spent about, oh, maybe two, three hours looking at the detail on it. One is that although there wasn't a significant statistical jump with regard to concerns about crime, there's a long-term trend in there that's showing an increased level of concern about crime for Kansas City. I think part of it's probably when the survey was being done, the news media was putting out a lot of stories, particularly on the homicide rate in Kansas City. So it's difficult oftentimes to try to tell what's impacting somebody's responses, but I think it's one that over time, the council needs to watch. Second one is, is that I know you folks have got all kinds of things on your plate, but the level of detail, particularly on the regions within Kansas City, and how people see things, I think it's worth for you to take 10, 15 minutes and actually get online and take a look at it, because the different council districts are affected by different kinds of perceptions by the business community that's out there. Other than that, the other one that comes up occasionally is that when you don't see any significant statistical change, there's a notion of whether we should continue to do the survey. And I guess as a nerdy researcher, I'd tell you, don't stop. I mean, this is one of those things that, as far as we can tell, Kansas City is the only community that does a business survey like this. We've gotten a lot of accolades, particularly in the Midwest, people calling us on, how do we do this? How's it getting done? I think it's, one of the reasons why we did this was that there's about 20,000 businesses in Kansas City. We've got seven business development officers at the EDC. So from the standpoint of just them being able to circulate in that business community and get out there and talk to them, it's not going to happen generally. So to give us some degree of statistical significance of how businesses see things. And then the other one is, even though they get to respond confidentially at the end of the survey, they're asked that if they've got issues, then we're more than happy at the EDC to talk to them. There's usually 60 or 70, I think it was 65 this year, that said they wanted to have conversations with us. Oftentimes, those are about business expansions, but oftentimes, they're oftentimes something that's bugging them, and we need to hear about it. So my advice, Troy and Scott heard it on Friday, I'm writing off to the sunset retirement as of June 1st. We're, was that five months and one week? Not that I'm counting. I was involved in, Carrie Tyndall and I were involved in setting up the survey back when we first did it. I think it's probably one of the best pieces of information you're going to get about how the business community sees Kansas City. So stay with it, watch what it looks like over time, particularly those changes. And insofar as you're not seeing the changes, that's probably a good thing on the whole. So.
Very good.
That's my advice as I write off into the sunset.
Well, good sage advice. I'm looking for a horse for you. But Carrie Tyndall decided she needed the last word, Gary, so this really ought to be good.
Why is that not unexpected?
Yeah, that's a huge surprise, right? I was just going to piggyback a little bit on what Gary said.
Again, Carrie, just.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Carrie Tyndall, Director of Economic Development in City Manager's Office. So I was just going to piggyback off of what Gary said about the value of doing the survey. And yes, I was there in the days when we used to do individual surveys at the business level. And so from a practicality standpoint, and us having good information of a cross-section of businesses, it does have a huge value. But I think also that what it does is it provides us with an insight into kind of where to dig a little bit deeper into the data and into our business community. So since we've been doing this for, I think, six years now, and I think you saw in this survey, there were some specific sectors that sort of stood out in terms of some of their satisfaction results. So I think we're at the stage now with this tool where we maybe want to take a look at drilling down within some subsectors, either geographically or at the industry level, and developing some supportive surveying techniques that kind of feed up to this. So we had talked for a while about maybe doing some focus groups or some spin-off industry sector surveys that would help us get more targeted in how we're meeting the needs, particularly of some of our target sectors. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity to build off the basic survey now that we've kind of gotten that, we're proficient at it at this stage. I also just wanted to say that from a staff perspective, you know, this is not just a report that we're getting once a year, and then we're not, we're just kind of putting it on the shelf. So there are actually meetings that we're trying to set up at this current time to do follow-up presentations with a variety of different stakeholder groups that we think would also benefit from having this information. So. So in particular, some of our economic development partner agencies like KC ADC or Smartport with regard to the supply chain Full Employment Council about the workforce data, and we're working with EDC and are in the process of setting up those follow-up meetings. So if council has, you know, suggestions about subgroups that they think that would benefit from this information, that's certainly something that we can do and get that information further out to the public.
Very good. Thank you very much. And gentlemen, thank you again. Appreciate you being here. We do have a quorum now, so we will go back to the top of the agenda and the approval of minutes for business session of January 25th, 2018.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Then finally, the number three, discussion of ordinances, resolutions, and communications on today's docket or for floor introduction. Is there such? Councilman Reed?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I actually have three separate items that I would like to discuss. The first is number 170963. This deals with, I believe, the contracts that Councilmember Lucas has presented to the full council. It was voted out of committee last week as due pass. And I am requesting that we, what was that?
Is it a recommendation?
Oh, yeah, thank you. No recommendation. That's why you're the city attorney.
Yeah. Next time, grab a microphone.
It was recommended out of the committee, and according to the city attorney, who certainly has us corrected, with no recommendation. I am actually going to recommend that we send it back to committee and request that we vote to do that. I have not had a chance to speak with Councilmember Lucas, however, in terms of referring it back to committee. But I will share that at least two or three city departments have reached out to me as it relates to this ordinance and some of the items that are listed in it. I have shared those with Councilmember Lucas, and I believe that it requires a little bit more attention from a committee perspective, so that if it is something that we're going to recommend, that we're doing, we are doing our due diligence as a council to make sure we're recommending it. So I was just talking about you, Councilmember Lucas.
I got you.
Okay.
I could see his ears burning as he walked in the room.
So since he's called it, that is what my request is, and I'm pretty sure that if he has some comments about it, I was asking if we could recommend to send it back to committee for additional work from there. Frankly, what I was saying is that I received some comments from two different departments within the city. I've shared with you some of their concerns already, and I think it deserves a little bit more work. And so my request as the committee chair is to send it back to committee so that we can do a little bit further work.
And I know you've got two items. Do you want to just pause for a moment?
We could probably talk about that one, yeah.
So I don't know if anyone has any discussion on that particular point, Councilman Lucas, since this deals with an ordinance that you were sponsor of. I don't know if you have a comment you want to make, or you want to save it for later?
We'll save it.
Okay. I'm going to do that more often. Councilman Reed, second one.
The second one, you and I had a conversation about offline, but I will publicly mention these comments about ordinance number 180030. This deals with the Unesto designation. And I, late last night, received some correspondence from the Mutual Musicians Foundation and from their legal attorneys as it relates to some of the items that are listed in there. And I'll go over just a couple of them, and I request that we will hold it for another week or two. There's some items that need to be addressed, I believe, from their perspective. One is that they certainly, as I am as well, certainly proud of the designation and look forward to kind of working through it and trying to do everything we possibly can to enhance this. But they have some concerns about the directives that are outlawing in the resolution. One is that the Mutual Musicians Foundation and also the Negro Musicians Union is one of the same prominently mentioned in the application. However, they feel as if that the members or the officers have had no communications with the city on the application or the committee in regards to this actual application. And so I think, as I've read through this, it's important that we certainly hold this up, given that they haven't had an opportunity to even see it, and they're mentioned in this resolution. In addition to that, there are a couple of other items that I think of great concern, but I could save those for later. And again, I definitely ask that we can hold this for an additional week or two and try to work through some of the concerns that not only the foundation have, but also some concerns that I submitted to the committee chair in writing that have not been answered as it relates to the NCTF dollars and also some litigation that the Mutual Musicians Foundation find themselves in currently. One with the former executive director, Adita Dixon, and also how that relates to the organization, and then what we had before us. And so I respectfully request that hold.
And as the sponsor of that, I've told Councilmember Reed that I have no objection to that. Sometimes communication is the issue, and we can solve that. I know that there has been some conversation related to it, but sometimes some members of the board hear it or don't communicate it. But nevertheless, we'll figure out what the problem is, so that won't be an issue. Number three.
The last item that I had is 180058. And that, of course, is what the aviation committee has heard this morning. It was voted out unanimously to move forward with the MOU for the new KCI Single Terminal Airport. We, of course, are still looking for folks to sign up as co-sponsors. I believe, of course, all of you have had an opportunity to review the MOU in its entirety, perhaps, hopefully. We certainly had a committee as a whole and reviewed it, I believe it was Tuesday of this past week. And so just wanted to give an update about that and request if anyone is so inclined, of course, to be listed as co-sponsors. I think it's extremely important on behalf of this city as we move forward and what I believe is a generational decision on behalf of this entire city.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. Any other items, ordinances, resolutions to discuss? Councilman Taylor?
I'll just briefly mention this in public safety. It's not an ordinance, but we had, you know, every homicide is a tragedy in the city, but especially when it's children. And Dominic Young Jr. was murdered just sitting in a car as the car was driving on Highway 71. And so want to applaud the police department for recently working with us to increase the tips reward hotline dollar amount to $5,000. It'd been $1,000 for a long time, it was outdated, need to be raised. They mentioned yesterday at Public Safety, they're getting a lot more tips, and I think we're going to see some results from it. But this, just like when Alexis Kane was murdered, I know we've had many other homicides, we made an effort as a council to increase the reward money. And so Saturday, I wrote a check for $1,000. Councilman McManus has, I think, Councilman Wagner, you've joined. Pastor Lindsay from Concord has put money in, I think $1,500. So we're up at around $10,000, if not more. I just want to mention that if anybody is watching and wants to add to that, they can contact Crime Stoppers and KC Crime Commission, and let's hope we get these people off the street, because whoever did this will do it again if we, you know, if they're out there. So we want to, you know, with Alexis Kane, there was multiple people, they were all caught, and they're now serving time, so.
Very good, and appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Anything else? I just have a quick one on first readings today. I don't know what the ordinance number has been assigned yet, but related to the Buck O'Neil Bridge and the cost-share agreement with MoDOT to do the short-term fixes that are necessary, as well as the environmental assessment necessary to plan for a new bridge, with the anticipation we will be successful in April with the PIAAC election. It is, the cost-share portion coming from Kansas City is actually, and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, there is actually money owed to the city from MoDOT presently. And so we would simply redirect those funds that are currently owed to us to be directed towards that project. I've talked to a few of you, not all of you, as it pertains to being co-sponsors. I know we've got Councilman Hall, Councilwoman Law, Councilman Fowler, Councilman McManus, and I'll add you, Councilman Taylor, and Councilwoman Justice. So I apologize if I've not talked to you about it, because I've been playing catch as catch can today for that. But just to know that that is coming today. Yes?
That number is 180068.
Thank you very much.
That's what I was going to say.
Well, I knew when he was going for his laptop computer, I knew what was coming. Thank you, Councilman Reed. Anything further related to ordinances, resolutions, or communications? Hearing none, anything else? Then we are adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you at 3 o'clock.